Good evening, everybody. How is my volume working? Okay. See a thumbs up. I see Counselor Schultz, Counselor Jones, Counselor Gall. And our, and Counselor Gar Boden is also online. And I'm going to go ahead and reach out to our city recorder and our city administrator to ask how they want to proceed on today's meeting since we've got the council president and I on Zoom.
Uh, no issues. You are participating in the meeting, so you are in accordance with state law and your council rules, so you may proceed, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all right. Well, then if we're okay with running through the meeting with me leading it instead of having somebody there go through the paperwork, we can go ahead and just move this way. Um, so I'll go ahead and I'm seeing shaking heads that that is okay, since this is again a work session. Um, so I'll go ahead and call the Northman City Council Work Session Agenda to, meaning to order for Monday, April 3rd. Um, have got me here on Zoom and like I said, along with Counselor Gar Boden, and then I see the three counselors on site. And it looks like we're missing, um, we have our vacancy, uh, that will be declaring with Eric Gleason is gone, and it looks like we're also missing Counselor Nordoff, correct?
That's correct. Uh, Counselor Nordoff, uh, is stuck in traffic, but she is in route.
Okay, thank you. So after calling the meeting to order, we'll move on to public comments. I'm not aware that there's any written public comments. Is there any online today as well?
We have two in person.
We have two in person. Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, well, before we go ahead and begin the public comments, I do always like to make sure I thank everybody for participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings, and each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in observance of organ open meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and our city recorder are taking notes of any action if needed. So we'll go ahead and, um, to our city recorder, if you'd like to call the first person to the microphone, and then I know you can go ahead and start, um, timing them when they begin to speak.
Robin Rep. Get ready to come on up. There's a microphone for you right there. I'll start the timer once you start speaking.
Hi, I'm Robin Rep.
Robin, I'm sorry, because, um, not everyone does this. Um, the microphone, if you want to pull it a little closer and feel free to sit down if you're more comfortable, you can stand up. But if the microphone's closer, that way we know it picks up on the audio because you'll see your words transcribing. Um, and that's for the folks online and at home. So thanks for your patience there, but you're ready to go.
I'm Robin Rep. I'm at nineteen ninety-three Sherman Avenue. I'm also owner of Pedal to Metal Flowers. And I'm here to ask for help regards to our downtown speed. Um, as you know, I'm a flower shop, so I am loading and unloading, and it has caused, um, great concern regards to the my safety and my employee's safety. Um, I have been out monitoring the speed and our average speed coming through town is thirty-three to thirty-seven miles per hour on my block. And I have done my part, especially in the morning, um, to flag people down with using my hands and pointing at my eyes and pointing at the speed that shows them, and, uh, unfortunately, um, that's just not good enough. And I'm here to plead to the city if we can find a way to help support our police to have a little more support regards to our traffic. Um, again, I've got, uh, customers that come in, and now I walk out with my customers. I open up their passenger door, and I stand there to make sure that traffic stops or slows down so I can protect my customers. And I would like to have some more support from the city if I can. Thank you.
Thanks, Robin. All right. Madam City Recorder, who do we have next?
Uh, Bill, is it Shagman?
Yeah, I was just kind of curious. Here, a while back, we enacted a safety fee in that, and at that time, it was, it was determined that it was never enough or anything. And then all of a sudden, you know, now we seem to have, we're hiring police force. We've, we don't hear the complaints of where officers are having to work overtime all the time, not getting any days off, not having to do paperwork and everything. I don't know if there was ever a time limit set for this. If not, is, do we really still need it, or is it just something we do? I know this isn't the time for you actually really answer such things and that, but I would appreciate it if somebody would, just so we, so I would know. That was it.
All right. Okay, thank you, Bill. Okay, if that is the end of our public comment period, then we'll go ahead and review the city council agenda for tomorrow evening. So looking at tomorrow evening, um, we have, of course, calling, um, the meeting to order, the pledge of allegiance, and then we'll move into the consent calendar. Um, this would be the time if any of the counselors has any questions or issues with the approval of the minutes.
Um, good, Madam.
Yes.
Um, uh, did the city recorder send an updated version of the agenda?
Um, possibly. I just have our, my paper copy in front of me from the, that I had grabbed from my mailbox, so I um, can take a look here. If you want to walk me through what the, um, update is.
Um, I'm being advised that the folks online do not have the current version. Uh, but the online version is, um, and so, uh, she'll very quickly post in the chat, uh, a direct link to that agenda, and my apologies.
That's okay. I can also probably pull it up on via email. Because that was the recent link that was sent at four fifteen.
Correct.
That's updated link. Okay. Okay, so then tomorrow, um, we'll call to, uh, the meeting to order, have a pledge, and then the, um, first item of business then will be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and we'll have a proclamation for that. So that'll be our first ceremonial item tomorrow, and then we'll also do a second proclamation for, um, Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Um, and I'm guessing is somebody from the Kids Hope Center going to be here tomorrow for that?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you for that update. Then we'll move into the consent calendar. Um, the consent calendar has, uh, three items on it. It has the approval of the minutes from March twenty-first. It has an OLCC license application and for the restaurant Angelina's. And then there is the adoption of the city administrator's evaluation. Um, was there any, um, items that needed to be pulled out or had discussion on for any of those by the council? Okay, um, and then was there anything, anything additional from the city staff that they wanted to add to any of those items?
Uh, now that I'm aware.
Okay, then, uh, tomorrow night, we'll also have public comments. That'll be number four. And five will be, um, ordinance two zero six five, amending the city council rules. Um, and it looks like those were some from the suggested changes that we had. And, um, six, and so I don't know if I see our, uh, city attorney, uh, popping on with his video here, so I don't know if there was anything you wanted to add to that.
Um, no, pretty self-explanatory. The rule changes that were, uh, um, discussed previously at council meeting, and they are here for adoption via ordinance.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and, um, take care of that tomorrow night. Any questions from the council on any of these items?
Nope.
No.
Then, um, number six is the ci- city administrator's annual salary review. Um, we have several documents in our packet to use to help us guide us in that. Um, and the, there's some files that include a compensation, um, study and also a wage schedule. And so I will have our city attorney jump back on here with his lovely face, so I can see him real quick. Um, so this is, um, this is, this would be the time then that our, uh, council would discuss that increase. Correct?
So, so, uh, pursuant to the employment agreement that the city has with their city administrator, each year there's a performance evaluation and also a salary review. So, um, uh, if you recall last year, your finance director, uh, Jessica Tara at the time did a compensation analysis, whereas this year, uh, the city contracted with Portland State University. And, and if you recall back in February, um, Jessica Tara was in front of the council uh, for budgeting purposes to get a sense of, of, of what she ought to be budgeting for. Now is the time to, to, uh, to consider a salary increase for your city administrator, and there are some figures and some options included in the, the packet.
Okay, all right. So I'm going to ask, what is the will of the council? How would you like to proceed on this discussion?
I'd like to walk through the, uh, table of comparison, you know, so that I can understand with all those numbers.
Okay. Mr. Wolf, can you help us do that?
I believe that I can. And if, if your current finance director is, is present, he might have some additional information, um, but I am happy to, to help walk through this.
Okay.
And I see somebody.
Am I, I can help out.
All right.
Sure.
Um, so I think that the, um, this compensation study was used in the February, um, discussion for budget purposes, and I went back and, um, reviewed and this, uh, the table was not finalized at that time. It is finalized now. There were no changes to it. Um, and I think that the, at the February meeting, the, um, the key items were, um, um, at least stood out to me in, in the summary of the notes was to look at the, um, increases and where our city administrators', uh, salary is relative to the average of the study and then to the median of the study and, um, it, the the February meeting, it was a, uh, undermarket by three point four percent on the average and, um, three point seven percent undermarket if you take the, the median. And so from those, the recommendation, at least for budget purposes, there was a figure that was, um, suggested, and at least for budget purposes was, um, uh, I guess there was consensus around, around that figure, and so that's what we've used for budget purposes. Um, I used that same figure in the recommendation, um, just as a starting place to say this was what was, um, discussed and at least agreed to. Um, I guess for budget purposes, um, and so like, that, that was just the starting point. And so one of the, the other option was, you know, you, it can be pretty much any, anything that you want, um, in regard to that, but seemed like a starting point, at least, um, there was consensus before for budget purposes.
And did I understand it correctly to, to, so if we were to try to align the city administrator to at least the medium of, um, of the study, that would be, is it three point seven percent would be what it would take to get a three point seven percent increase would get him to the medium?
That would get, uh, yeah, so we get into the median.
Okay.
I believe that's what the recommendation was at the February meeting.
Okay, all right. How is, okay, any other questions? So I know, uh, Counselor Jones, did you have some other questions?
I understand the numbers here correctly. So when, when we look at, when we're looking at the, um, budgeting fiscal impact part of page eighteen, right before the staff recommendation, says it will be budgeted for one forty-four, six nine six plus a cola. Um, you, what is it, but what is the, um, value now? And what is the cola that we're going to have?
So the cola has not been yet, um, established yet. Um, and that would be a cola that would be the same cost of living adjustment for all unrepresented, um, employees, and so that has not been set yet for budget purposes.
Okay, so is the one forty-four, six nine six what is now, or in, uh, on top of what is now? I just want to understand.
That's, that would be the proposed, um,
Increase.
Increase, right, without cola.
Without?
Without cola.
That's with the three seven or what?
To get to the three seven.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. This is pretty well written. I, I've read it a couple times, but.
Hmm. I would imagine too, when this salary study was doing, made, um, a few months ago, that, um, those salaries didn't include a cola as well. So that's something to keep in mind too, if we were separating those things out.
And is the comparison of all the jurisdictions like roughly the same size in population testing?
Yeah, they try to do a, uh, a pretty comparable, um, you know, market study when they do these, um, kind of oddball ones get thrown out that don't quite match. So yes, they do try to do a representative, uh, population, um, when they're doing these studies.
And I see some of them are PERS and some of them are.
Yes.
That, that kind of surprised me a little bit. I don't know why. I guess, yeah.
Okay.
What is EE insurance? It says, it's in the columns, PERS and insurance.
About my, you know, I, I'm not sure.
I can fill this one.
What those initials are served for. Arizona missions?
The, the EE stands for Employee Paid Insurance. So when Portland State does these comp studies, they look also to the adjusted compensation on the far right, and they'll, they'll take out money that the employees are required to pay to contribute for their health insurance.
Oh, okay.
That's why those are in brackets.
And so that's their portion.
Correct. And then the, the further adjustments for vacation and holidays, they factor in and they convert paid time off, uh, excluding sick leave, so it'd be vacation or PTO or holidays into a dollar figure to help get a better sense of the overall cost of, uh, of, of employees and how much that overall they compare with other jurisdictions.
So are you wanting a consensus, Jessica, or what do you?
Um, yeah, I think tomorrow night we can officially make the motion. Um, but I think, uh, and, and our city administrator could, you know, uh, direct me in another way, but I think that tonight we should come up with a kind of a consensus of where we would be headed or because, you know, we, one of us could come up with a number and the other group could be like, wait, but that's way off than what I was thinking. So I'd rather discuss it now during the work to, work session. What do you think, uh, Mr. Wolf?
I think that would be a, a fine process. Um, I'm not going to give a recommendation on what you, the council ought to give for a, for a salary increase, but that would be a perfectly fine process. Um, or folks could think about it overnight and somebody could be prepared to, to make a motion of, of what they feel would be, uh, appropriate.
Well, I don't, okay, I don't want to sound cheap, Jessica, but and this is just something I'm throwing out there, but if we threw four percent at it, he'd be above the, you know what I'm saying? I, that's just, I remember that it, it's in my mind. Uh, anybody else can throw anything else they want out.
Hmm.
Yeah, I'd say that too, since we're in work session. I'm going to say that, um, we are lucky to have.
Oh, yeah, no doubt.
And, um, I wish there were more money to throw around. Um, I, my one concern is just, you know, because I know we are not flush, um, is that it's sort of online with what our other excellent staffers are making as well. I don't want that to get too out.
Well, I just threw that out there. I, I, I think at a minimum, we got to do that three, seven. And so I just threw a, you know, kind of an even number guy, but anyway, you, you guys talk about it. I, it doesn't matter to me. Uh, it does, but it doesn't.
Counselor Schultz, did you have any thoughts?
I guess I didn't know when the last time there was an increase. Is it annually? Do we increase it? Is the three point seven like on par with what you normally, I, because I'm so new, I don't know what the previous, how long ago we've increased.
I believe it's an annual, um, assessment that's done.
Yeah, so I didn't know.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's an annual, an annual increase. Um, I mean, I, I hear what Counselor Gall is saying and also taking into consideration Counselor Jones' thoughts as well. Um, you know, we, I think we wish we could all pay our, um, employees more money, so we have to be fiscally responsible with the budget um, and also make sure that we are paying people, um, what their value is and what the industry, um, market is. And to, I, I agree that the three point seven, um, to four percent is appropriate. Um, tomorrow night, if we were, if somebody were to make that motion of a four percent increase, I would be, um, that's something that I would feel is very appropriate and to get him and, you know, we're not, this is not putting him at the top and it's not putting him at the bottom. He's putting him in, in the, um, middle here of what the range is for the city administrators doing the similar work, and I think that's really important. I know that's the overall goal of the city is to make sure that all of our employees are aligned with what the industry standards are, and that's something that um, staff has been, um, working really hard on. Um, so I think, you know, it sounds like I'm kind of hearing a consensus that tomorrow night, if we were around a four percent increase, then if somebody were to make a motion that's similar to that, that we're getting really close to all being on the same page. Um, Counselor Gar Boden is there, Counselor iPad, if there was any thoughts that you wanted to add to that as well?
Oh, I, I think the four percent is fine.
Yeah.
That's the number I have in my mind.
We may, we're just copying.
Was there another comment that I missed?
I know. I think we can, we've got kind of a consensus, don't we, Jessica?
I think so too. I think that, that would be, and then, um, yeah, and then we'll be able to.
Questions. I don't know if they can be answered, but I'd like to ask them anyway.
Hmm.
Um, so, and I'm sure there's a spectrum. So what is the range of, of pay that we have across staff? From the lowest, you know, from lowest to the closest or over?
So, um, that's a, it's a good question. Um, I think that that is one of the, um, things of the compensation study that we have performed provides. Um, so it, you know, wasn't only, um, the, um, the city administrator position, but it was across the spectrum of all unrepresented employees. And, um, I don't have a high and a low in mind for like, for the studied positions, but I know like each one of the positions studied, um, does have, um, either upward or downward adjustments. Um, so just based on my like remembering of like looking at the report, there were, there was a mixed, mixed result. We had some positions that were under and some that were, um, slightly over, I believe.
And then just to be clear, the, the adjustments here, so this, this negative three point seven for the median, if if that were to be reached, he would be at the median, and then we are also adding cola on everybody's. We're going to arrange for that.
Traditionally, I think the colas have ranged anywhere from, um, one to six percent. I think generally they've fallen into three percent range.
And when is that decided?
Um, right around budget time, I believe.
Um, okay.
So I think the, the compensation study will inform the salaries that are budgeted in the pro, in, so as the budget's development, we'll use the compensation study results, um, you know, to project out what those increases might be for the other unrepresented. But we do have to also like take a shot at estimating what cola, um, would be included in that budget as well.
And, and is the cola something that is mandated to us or that we decide?
Um, I don't think it's.
So, so if I may, are there any other questions specific to salary? Because I don't want to engage with that for ethical reasons. But I can answer a lot of the questions that are not about me.
Broad.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
So, so I would gladly answer, but I don't want to engage in any part of the conversation. So if you're done with any about my salary, because it'd be unethical for me to participate in that discussion.
Yeah.
Those broader questions. I'm trying to, you know, I, I think of our budget as forty million, and then, you know, I wonder what percentage of that is going to be on top, and then what percentage of that is going to be compensated by P, you know, just how are we going to pay for this? This is ultimately what I'm asking.
So from, um, so from the high level, so about half of our employees are represented. And so every third year, a different group is going through the collective bargaining. And that comes before the council. We generally have it in executive session so that you see details, and then we vote on the actual contract in public. Um, there is a market rate study done to make sure that what is in the collective bargaining is at market um, with each of those contracts, and then it's negotiated ranges for their colas. But there are additional compensation in there, um, uh, in those overall packages. So what the council sees and what gets presented to you all is, for instance, whether it's police, fire, streets, this is at the end of the three years, what this contract, if you vote on it, is going to cost the taxpayers. And so that then is in the budget. Right now, we're going through negotiations with the police department. For the non-represented, uh, the former finance director, uh, came to the council and got approval on the last budget to do a compensation study. And so, uh, Mr. Bridges has, uh, inherited that study, which was just recently finalized. When the rough draft came out, all department heads, regardless whether or not they were, um, overrepresented or un, or not, meaning they're department heads, they're not needed, they all actually got a copy of theirs, um, and were asked if you have any issues to give the finance director feedback. Um, I deliberately don't participate in that because at the end of the day, as the finance director works with the departments on their budget, the decisions ultimately come to me, um, to finalize in a budget that then comes to you. With regards to cola for non-represented, I've said in the past, um, to the council, and I'll say it again, I'm basically the union rep for the unrepresented. Um, and so we are looking, um, at, uh, the salary studies, um, and they're not on par with those represented by unions, and you kind of would expect that. Um, and so, uh, as we look at the budget, what can the budget withstand and can you project out? In fact, one of the things that we're working on is that long-term projection. Uh, because as you have heard in the past, Uh, because as you have heard in the past. Uh, increments on property taxes only come in about three percent. And so, um, uh. You know, I will tell you that uh if you only get in just over four million in property taxes. Um, and you're still having then to subsidize that amount with the public safety fee. It'll tell you that. We have to make ends meet, and so that's how we operate. Um, and so when you see the next budget, um, uh, we look at the uh. Cola based on uh what's called the CPI U for um uh the western region. For the western regions, and then we look at those numbers, and then we discern, can our budget withstand that? And that's the question. I'm also going to be the first to say that. Um, that call is important. The reason that call is important. Is because up until this point, uh, you have in your packet the pay scales for all individuals. I have quite a few numbers of the department heads that have topped out. Meaning that we have to work on the ranges and steps, and that's why the compensation was done, because. Outside of cola, they are getting nothing additional. And um, and so uh that that's mindful. However. As you heard from the finance director, although you've topped out, you're getting cola. The survey determines. Where are you in relation to your peers for the same job, same size community, same all of that? And so that's something that we will work through in the budget and then bring back to the governing body. It goes first off, as as you know, to the finance committee. Um, and then they recommend to the governing body. So I'm hoping that helps answer um where things are.
Okay. Um, so any other further questions on this? I feel like we're kind of very similar on the same page. Um, and would probably be able to have somebody make a motion tomorrow night that we're all close. To uh agreement on, and then we can have further discussion if that's needed.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so moving along to for the meeting tomorrow night, welcome Counselor Nordoff. I see that you just arrived. And let's see, tomorrow night, we would also have item six in the agenda, and that is. Dump demolition of a building on Sherman. So is there somebody that wanted to speak to this tonight? I know we have some information on this um in our packet on page twenty two.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, we solicited quotes from. Three different construction companies to demolish the buildings at nineteen hundred Sherman Avenue, which is the old Main Street Auto. Uh, that lot is intended to be. Append to our new visitors information center and provide more parking space. Um, the building's actually the. Little old coffee shop or Main Street auto shop's not in terrible condition, but the old. Gas station building is in pretty poor condition. Um, and not. Really any use to the city. I had discussed with uh several contractors. Timing, they said if we got it out early. Pricing would be a lot better than trying to be in the middle of construction season. Um, however, only one of them bid it. Uh, which was Johnson Rock Products staff had had an estimate of twenty thousand to demolish and haul off all materials. Which includes both buildings, part of the fencing, the Main Street Auto sign. Um, actually pulling the old hydraulic. Uh, lifts and pulling oil out of them. We also had a environmental assessment already done on the property. Um, two of them actually. Since it was an old gas station, there is a. Deep seated plume in there, but we're only disturbing the surface. Um. There's oil and gas contamination, but it's down seven to ten feet below the surface, um, which we knew when we purchased the property. Um, any superficial. It meets industrial and standards as far as clean it, but it's, and we're not disturbing down deep. So as far as uh in the building, there's. No asbestos, believe it or not, in the structure, um, or other. Materials, uh.
Power is kind of that pole, or what what do they do on?
Power was. Scheduled to be removed already. Um, we kept the power on there because of the events. We had in the parking lot. David actually was gonna have it pulled in. November. Um, but since we were having a couple of events on the site, we kept the power connected. They're supposed to remove it next week. Um.
Okay.
And we received one. Quote from Johnson product products, an amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. To tear the buildings down. Again, our estimate was twenty thousand for the materials. Which, uh, and they're bringing it clean down to the ground and then backfilling where the bill buildings were gravel. So it's, it'll be prepped to repave if you've looked at the. Look clean, it'll be prepped to be repaved. In the meantime, we had. A person hit part of our fence and the Main Street Auto building. Um, which we still have an insurance claim on, but so let me get a little more fence removed than we thought to begin with. We were gonna leave the exterior fence, but. Now ninety feet of fence has been destroyed, but um. Staff recommends, therefore, however, think the price is very fair. We solicited quotes from three people. In fact, I called them a couple of times. The two that didn't bid, just to. Try to prompt them, and we only got one, but the bid was fair and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, um, Mr. Dunham. And did they say how quickly they would be able to do this once this would be approved?
They plan to do it in April after we pull the power. Um. Again, they wanted to do it for the real construction season starts, and with the weather, the way it's been, we don't know when that's gonna be.
All right, okay. Any other questions for Ralph before he tries to get out of that table?
He'll be back.
He'll be back, okay. Well, that um that then would take us tomorrow night to number seven. Which is declaring a council vacancy seat on page twenty four is the information that we have on this. Um, and and this would be in regards to Counselor Gleason, um, moving out of the area has created a vacancy. So to our city administrator. Um, would you like to kind of speak to this and give our um? Counsel some guidance here?
So, Madam Mayor and Council, uh, regarding vacancies, uh, your city charter uh requires. Uh, that you declare a vacancy. It's the only way that there is a vacancy. Um, interestingly enough, depending on how you interpret the law. Um, the charter also says that your vacated individual remains an elected official until replaced. Um, and I don't know how that really can occur. But um, uh, in this case, um, under your charter section, uh, nineteen vacancies. Um, section two subsection F resignation from office. And so in order to fill vacancy, uh, it is done by appointment by majority of the council. And that appointee's term will fulfill the balance of, in this case, then Counselor Gleason's term. Um, which uh has uh will go through until the end of next year. Uh, given um all the time tables that they put on certifying. So the election normally would be in November of twenty twenty four, um, but uh we don't anticipate. Uh, the new council taking office until December, very much like. Uh, we did with the most recent election because of uh state law. Um. It is up to the council um as to how they fill that position. There's no guidance, there's no requirement. Um, so that would be appropriate to hand it back to you, Madam Mayor, and say that this is appropriate time. Uh, for discussion as to how the council would like to fulfill. Tomorrow's action is to declare the vacancy. The purpose of the discussion is to give guidance to staff if you need guidance. Uh, for instance, an application process, an interview process. It depends on what the council so chooses. Do you have to go through any of that process? No. Um, this governing body and researching back has done everything from interview processes. Just simply just appointing whoever the the next person on the ballot that got the most votes. Um, so it is truly a um. A decision of the governing body. So with that said, unless your city attorney um has any additional or conflicting information. Um, from what I provided, um, I'll hand it back uh to the mayor.
All right, thank you. I see our attorney's face popping up here too, to see if he has any uh additional thoughts before we have a discussion.
No, nothing to add. This is the council's prerogative on the process and.
Yeah, um, I do, I I have seen how um some of our neighboring cities have gone through a process like this similar. Um, in recent years, and um from the way I understand it, there was a, you know, the the vacancy was declared. It was posted kind of like an open position on a committee. Um, applications were received. They were um discussed with the council, and then I think they even had some interviews. And I think that that would be a very appropriate process to do. Um, maybe set a time timeframe on that, maybe once the position is declared, we could say, well, we'll take applications for the next, you know, two weeks or something like that. Um, and then we could meet. Um, go over the, and I guess that's where we really would look for staff on direction on what that. Application would look like as far as something similar when we have open board positions, cause you'd wanna know what the persons. Why they think they're qualified or skills or something like that. Um, is, does that sound reasonable? I'm asking both the attorney and the and the and the council. Does that sound like a reasonable process?
Yes.
Yes, I believe so.
I agree.
Okay, so could we have staff staff help guide us on getting that posted and? Uh, what the, you know, and then, and again, maybe um helping guiding us what we think would be a reasonable timeframe in between meetings. Um. Of some dates on what what that would look like, but we could start with. Um. Having it posted and then receiving some applications, and I guess then we could go from there. If it's like. We have thirty applications of people who wanna be on council. Well, then we might have to approach it a so a little bit differently than if it's five.
Right.
So, Madam Mayor, um. So tomorrow, the council, uh, if it so chooses, will actually declare the vacancy.
Okay.
Um, what I would like to do is then, from a staff perspective, ask our city reporter to reach out to city reporters elsewhere in the state. To find out, uh, and have them share their applications with us. From others throughout the state that have done this process, and if they had specific questions. On the application or during the, say, interview process, if they'll share those. And then I would like for her to be able to compile those and bring those back to the council. The reason for that is it's your process, um, and so it really should be your application as to what. Um, you want folks to answer when they fill out. I will tell you that the first page of the application will be really mandatory. Uh, you have to make sure that they're a registered voter, that they've lived here, and they meet all of the normal eligibility requirements. And so that's just sort of um a process. But then it gives the council an opportunity to look at um uh other applications and guide staff that says. Yes, these are the things that we want folks to answer when they fill out that application. Uh, because otherwise, the staff is really uh being put in an awkward position to just. Decide those questions, and they not, may not be relevant to to you as a governing body. And then, once we have finalized that application, um, and I know that this means that that position will be open a little longer. But it's easy for me to send things out and for you all to give me feedback directly. So, once you all have said, these are the questions, staff can put it together in a form. I can send it out and say, is there anyone that has any comment? Please respond directly to me. And so I can make sure the application is good. From there, we would like to advertise it, and if it's two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, whatever. Um, so that we make sure that we advertise it and then get any applications back to the governing body. Um, so that you all can vet them. Um, so. I see it taking a little longer than a quick swift two weeks, and so I wanna set expectations. But if you as a governing body say, no, we wanna put the pedal to metal, just make it happen. Well, staff can make that happen too. It'll just be a very generic application, and then you all configure your questions and interview. Um, uh, when you decide who you're going to interview, if you even choose to interview, so.
I'm very curious about. Um, questions beyond the requirements to get elected, other cities are asking. That's, that's very interesting. Even if we don't use any of them, I just think that's really a good way to get started.
The comment I have is we're pretty deep into this homeless deal.
Yes.
And to bring somebody brand new on board, I'd rather, I'd rather take our time. And the person have to live with our decision. I I I don't know, I maybe I'm just talking.
Thinking the same thing as well. It's, I think it's a lot to ask for their first meeting to be the one where they say yes to ordinance that they know. That's true. I I really agree. That's a. Powerful reason to.
Ease into it, huh?
Yeah, well, I I definitely like the idea of um having our city recorder reach out to, you know. Um, people, cities who have been through this process, because I'm a big fan of, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Um, but we can find out what's being done and then tweak it and make it our own and what's appropriate to our city. So, yeah, I'm okay with it taking. A few, you know, weeks, if not longer, so that we can make sure that we're getting um a an applicant who would be, or you know. We want to make sure that the person that's appointed to this position is a good reflection of the citizens of North Bend. And the residents of North Bend, so we wanna do the. Um, do justice to the council position and um take our time and make sure that we make a thoughtful decision. Um, and uh, so I'm I'm all for that. So we will stay tuned then while our city recorder is in. Um, information gathering mode, and then it looks like then tomorrow night, we would ne- need a motion to declare the vacancy, correct?
Yep.
Okay. All right, okay. Any other questions on that then?
No, and Madam Mayor, just to reiterate, so. Uh, staff will actually survey uh other cities. We'll glean any applications and any questions that they use in their interview process. We'll go ahead and compile that in a packet. Um, for a future uh council meeting. Um, we'll put that on a work session so the council then can uh have plenty of time to review those. And then give guidance to the staff on a formal application and specific uh questions they want on the application. Um, once that application's finalized, uh, staff will go ahead and post it for two weeks. Um, all applications that uh come back will then be uh compiled. And put forth to another work session so that you all can vet uh those. Um, is that on the Marcus to what the governing body is requesting?
Correct, that's where, that's the page that I'm on. Am I missing anything from anyone else?
And let let's hope there's some answers. There have?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Cool.
Okay. All right, so we'll take care of that tomorrow evening, um, and then move into that process. And then number eight on the agenda tomorrow would be any action if resulting from executive session, and I don't believe we're having any executive session tonight or tomorrow. We'll have the city administrators report, our committee reports, council comments, and other business. Um, and then we'll go into adjournment.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um. Mr. Dunham has other business that should be on the revised agenda, if I'm not mistaken.
Does have other business. Oh, yeah, I went back to my paper copy, so let me pull that up. So, Mr. Dunham, you you were going to come back, weren't you?
He's crawling this time.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council. We use sodium hypochlorite to disinfect our wastewater system or. Before we discharge our effluent into the bay. Annually, we request quotes. We get two shipments a year. We just got a, our second shipment. Or roughly, we get a shipment about every six to seven months. Uh. However, we just order it as we get low. We have fifty, five hundred gallons of storage, so when we get down to about two hundred gallons. Which, if you remember. Last year or the year before, there was a chlorine shortage, and we were worried about getting chlorine. Uh. We go ahead and order, and then we make sure we can get quotes for. Uh, delivery, in this case, would be about September, possibly October for the next one. In between our last delivery and this one, we got a thirty percent or thirty cent a gallon price increase. Um, from Hossa Inc., which is out along V Washington. They're the closest. They've always been the lowest price so far. Um, but we order it when we need it, cause we have. One big storage tank and our our price is based on bulk delivery. So we have to order a minimum of forty six hundred gallons. So we have to order a minimum of forty-six hundred gallons. Um, and I think their maximum they can carry is fifty-four hundred, but we have fifty-five hundred gallons worth of storage, so. Regardless, price went up thirty cents, we got delivery, which is thirteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. On fifty-two hundred and thirty-two gallons of sodium hypochlorite. The only other way we can buy it on the short term is by the fifty-five gallon drum, which is, I looked. At pricing online, the cheapest online in fifty-five gallon drums was over five dollars a gallon, so. Um, the bulk price is the way to go. Longview, Washington is closer than our next closest supplier, which is in the Bay Area in California. And shipping costs go up as you, you know, a truck costs. Right now at about two dollars a mile to deliver, so. Staffs therefore. Belatedly bringing to you a delivery. That we recommend approval on, an amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. For sodium hypochlorite, which we need regardless. Yes.
I have a question, what would it take for us to switch to a UV system? Is that something that might potentially be possible?
It is possible, we've looked at it in the past, UV. Is not inexpensive in itself, um, cause they just converted to UV at. And they also have backup sodium hypochlorate, but don't use very much. Um, converted to UV at plant two, they've had nothing but problems with it. But it is a possibility. The issue with UV is we'd have to build a homeless structure. To run the UV through because it's very, you can only flow water through. I think it's about an inch to an inch and a quarter between your bulbs. So you have to flow up to our plants rated at ten million gallons a day, so that ends up building a pretty big structure to fit all the. On the high end, granted, we are. Our, uh, summertime flows are nine hundred thousand gallons a day, so you have to be able to cover the whole spectrum. And you also have to deal with your turbidity at a much higher level because light only. Uh, not that our water isn't clean going through, but turbidity, even minor changes in turbidity. Um, affect that, so. Uh, it would save us on two ends, because right now we chlorinate and then we dechlorinate. But, uh, I can look further into the expense of that, but I'm just guessing at a structure to put a UV system in. I know it'd be over a hundred thousand dollars just to put the structure in. I'm not, it'd be more than that, I think, but that would be a minimum. And then you still have to change bulbs fairly frequently. We looked at it in the past, I'm not saying we shouldn't look at it again in the future, but. It'd be a big run expense.
Quite a big cost involved, it sounds like.
Um, I did a conversion, um, I haven't a clue what Kuzbe is, but my last conversion was, uh, uh, just roughly about three hundred and seventy-five thousand. But everything all in.
And so right now we're spending in chemical. Um, to an sodium bisulfate, which is a de-chlor. And sodium hypochlorite. We're spending, our price this one up, but we're spending about thirty thousand dollars a year in those two chemicals. Which is our disinfection and then stripping the chlorine before discharging. But again, the bulbs, I think about every four months, they have to change the bulbs. And they're not cheap, they're not here.
I'll tell you where the most expense got us, electrical.
Any power, but.
Yeah, there's the power. For all the violet and less, but it was physically getting all the power in to handle it all.
Thank you.
All right, good to know. Okay, so let's see. I don't, let me go back to the online updated version, I think that was it, right?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's adjournment, then adjournment.
Okay, so tomorrow night would be an adjournment and then for this evening, um. I will go ahead and adjourn our work session, so have a great evening, everybody, we'll see you tomorrow night. And begin with some of those great ceremonial items, the beginning of the council meeting tomorrow evening. So, thank you and signing off, meeting adjourned.